All right, welcome everyone to this March 3rd meeting of the Town of Hilton Head Parks and Recreation Commission. And at this time I'll call the meeting to order and if you would join with me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. So Marcy, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, we are.
Oh, well, that's always a wonderful thing. So I believe now I'm supposed to ask Renee to call the roll.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I will call the roll today.
Wow, that sounds good. Thanks, Marcy.
Mr. Okarma?
Here.
Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Monmier?
Here.
Mr. Zarilla?
Here.
Mr. Dowling?
Here.
Ms. Christian?
Here.
And Mr. Kasaya?
All right, next on the agenda are citizen comments, and I believe, Marcy, you have a statement to read.
Yes, sir. Public comments concerning today's agenda were submitted, were to be submitted electronically via the town's open town hall portal. And the public comment period closed at 1:00 PM today. There were no public comments. Citizens were also provided the opportunity to sign up for public comment participation by phone during the meeting. There were no requests from citizens to speak on today's agenda.
Okay, thank you, Marcy. All right, so the next item would be approval of the minutes of the January 14, 2021 Parks and Rec Commission meeting. And so I would entertain a motion to have those minutes approved.
So moved.
Jack Daly moves. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'm gonna say Thomas Dowling seconded. I think he was first. Hey, there you go. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I see, we can't do that. We have to do a roll call, don't we? Talk on it. I knew I was getting ahead of myself. Okay, all right, Marcy, have at it.
Mr. Okarma?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Mominair?
Yeah.
Mr. Zarilla?
Yes.
Mr. Dowling?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Kasaya?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you'd think I'd get this right after all these months of doing this. Okay, reports, I don't believe we have any. So let's go on down to, we don't have any unfinished business that I know of. Let's go down to new business, which is review of the draft CIP recommendations list. And I'll ask Jennifer Ray if she'll let us know what's going on. Thanks, Jennifer.
Sure, thank you. Jennifer Ray for the record. Now I have Julian Walls here. He's gonna tag team with me on some of this. You all know that in the past, we have brought forward to you all a list of potential park upgrades and also solicited your input on recommendations for park projects in the upcoming CIP. Staff met with the Planning Commission CIP Committee, I believe that was last week, and we will go back to them again next week and then to the full Planning Commission in a couple of weeks before it goes on to Town Council to incorporate into this year's budget preparation. I wanted to come to you all today and go over with you the list of parks. I put in your packet the whole CIP list, but I just wanna focus on the park ones and just get your input, let you know what's going on, and then we can carry your input on to the Planning Commission CIP Committee again next week. So the, under the park category, it was on page two of the document. And those, just for those of you that may not have gone through CIP process with us before, our standard categories are pathways, roads, parks, existing facilities, new facilities, and a beach maintenance. And we always go through and try to have projects in each category and then prioritize them, working with groups such as yours and the Parks and Rec, or the Planning Commission CIP Committee. And then Town Council is the one with fiduciary responsibility, so they'll actually figure out how much they can afford to spend on any of these things. So we just kinda get them in the right list, the right order, is what our, our charge is. So the first project is Chaplain Linear Park. You all know that we started plans for that back in 2012, 2013. We got pretty far along and put on hold because we were focusing on a couple other TIF projects. TIF is the Tax Increment Financing District, and Chaplain Linear Park is the last TIF project remaining. Now that we finished Low Country Celebration Park, it was a TIF project. We are ready to move forward with Chaplain Linear Park. The concept will be to reengage the community. We'll pull back out those old plans. We'll bring on a consultant. We'll reengage the community to see what we are, make sure we're on the right track, make any changes we need to make, and move that one forward for permitting and construction. So that's a top priority. That one hopefully will kick off here pretty soon. The next three are called on this list, major park master planning. Those are the projects that we've been talking about since the Parks and Rec Master Plan was adopted in October and subsequently our plan in November, and then part three that we started working on November, December, and brought to you in January. So master planning, concept development for the three, big three, that I call them Mid Island Track, redo of Chaplain Community Park proper, and a redo of Crossings Park. So those would be in FY22 would just be planning. They wouldn't get into construction at that point. Another category is the park, existing park and recreation facility improvements. Last year, or two years ago, we went through a large list with you all. You may remember, it looked like this, if you can see up on my screen, and you kinda went through and prioritized, ranked the projects, and some we have done and some had to be deferred due to cost or other issues. And so we have a couple on this year's list. Julian, would you jump in and talk about the two that are on this year's proposed list?
Sure, thank you. Julian Walls for the record. Jennifer, did you want me to brief Butch and the commission on, on what we've done so far on that list that you just showed?
I think that would be helpful to let them know what we've done and then why the ones that we have on this list for this coming year are on there.
Great, I'll, I'll go, I won't be long. So I just wanna let everyone know that one of the items on the list that has been completed is the new restrooms at Crossings Park. That was completed in October. You may or may not remember that that, that was on the priority list that was generated in 2019 and approved by the commission. It's, it's a men's and women's restroom. You may have seen it already out there, and it's, it's by the Meadow area. It was budgeted for $150,000. It, it came within budget and it has been completed. Another item I wanted to let the commission know, and, and I don't wanna get ahead of myself, but we were directed by council to design an overlook at Islanders Beach Park. And this overlook is gonna look like a, a small pavilion that's gonna be an extension off the existing boardwalk. And, and it will provide, it's gonna be ADA compliant. It'll provide persons to go out there and sit and enjoy the beach. That, that is budgeted this year. We estimate the cost to be $100,000, and that includes the design phase of it, which we're in right now. Hopefully, we'll have the specifications ready to go out for bid by May. And if that does happen, I'm very confident that I could build, get that built within 60 days. So I wanted to, to brief the commission on that also. That was brought forward by, by Town Council. Another, another accomplishment that we did that was on the list, and Jennifer Ray and Jeff Buckleoo were inspirational in this, was the rowing and sailing center, expanded playground, and additional parking lot. If, if, if you guys and girls have been out there recently, you've noticed that the parking lot is now double in size, and there's a nice, uh, small playground that, that melanders into the existing swing there. And that was, that was completed in the summer of this year. Does anyone have any questions on those so far?
No questions, but Julian and I was out there at the Sailing and Rowing Club this weekend, and it looks very nice.
Thank you so much. The, the two that Jennifer's talking about for FY22 are the Barker Field Extension Picnic Shelter. That's, that's the part that the town owns that's a soccer field, and that's nothing more than, than a covered picnic shelter. It was budgeted for $75,000. I think the design fee on that would, would be very minimum because we'll probably be using a standard that we've used in the other parks. I'd look for that being a simple IFB that, that we should be able to complete within 45 days after we put it out for bid. The other one is the Jarvis Park Playground Pour and Play. If you've been out to Jarvis Park, you know that we have two playgrounds. One is smaller, and you've probably noticed that we do have that up to standards now. We, we put rubberized mulch in there and put a border around it and cleaned it up. The large one is sand, and it's just not compliant. We, we're gonna budget $77,000, do a simple IFB, and bring a company in and do a pour and play on that. I, I would anticipate that no longer than 30 days after we give them the notice to proceed on that.
Some of the other things that were on the list that were A priorities that did not get done were the Chaplain Field, Chaplain Park Athletic Field Lighting, which came in significantly over budget, which delayed it initially. Now with the conceptual planning for those big parks, not knowing where, if they're gonna be ball fields there or not, it doesn't make good financial sense to invest in lighting for fields that could end up going away soon, soon in, you know, relative terms. Same with Crossings Park, the batting cages, that's another one with the redo of Crossings Park, not investing in something that may or may not be in the place that we want it with its cost. Those were two that were deferred until those next park planning projects come online. See any other As on that list. The other two parks that are under new parks, one is Patterson Family Property Park. Patterson is over on Marshland. It's across from Habitat. It's on the water side. We already have some funding for that from CDBG. It's our Community Development Block Grant. A few years ago, Town Council allocated some funding, that year's funding for Shelter at the Boys and Girls Club and the remaining money for a small neighborhood park there in that community. And so there's already some funding. We proposed to use this year's allocation to balance that out and be able to do that one. Taylor Family Park, Family Property Park is on Old Wild Horse. It's a property that we had a life estate on, and now we can do some construction on it, but there is not a funding source at this time. That was just another one that had come up from a request long ago. The Town Council purchased property or acquired property for neighborhood parks, and many of the neighborhoods said they didn't want them, and now that's one that's kinda come back up on, on the list. And it would be a shelter, playground, you know, a couple parking spaces, but more of a place for people in that area to walk to for their kids or grandkids to play. So that's the list that staff has put together and kinda the thinking behind it. Oh, Julian, I see you wagging your finger.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jennifer. I didn't wanna interrupt you.
No, you're good.
I, I wanted to add in there one, one other thing that was on the A list under priority, and that was the Bristol's hockey rink fencing and, and ramp outfit. I, I just wanted to let the commission know that I've gone out there and every quarterly report I see, there's, there's no report whatsoever that we need to replace the fencing around the hockey rink. I can tell you and assure you that since we've taken Bristol's over, we have done some major repairs to the skate ramps and brought those back up to town standards. So for that $120,000 that was allocated for that, there's, there's nothing that needs to be done at this point in time. And to further that, in FY23, in my current budget supplemental, I have budgeted for a rink surface replacement. So just to let everyone know that, I didn't want that to fall off, off the radar at all.
At this point, if it makes sense for you, Chairman, we'll ask Marcy to call through the order of commissioners for any questions or comments that you might have, and we'll incorporate your input today into our meeting with the Planning Commission CIP Committee that is scheduled for next week.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. All right, here's our opportunity to, to make any comments, make any recommendations that we might have so with, with the CIP program. So Marcy, if you would, if you'll call the roll, we'll, we'll go down the list, and if you have a comment, make it. If you don't, say I don't have any comments, but that way we know for sure.
Mr. Okarma?
I just have one question for Jennifer or Julian. Chaplain Park, we've been told is going to, well, it possibly might not look much like it does today in the future. You know, we have to first of all figure out what the optimal use is, which is a reason why we can't get some of the stuff done that I'm sure lots of us would like to get done. That's a park, that's probably the park I go to most often. But can you remind us what the timing is before, plus or minus, when we know kind of what the blueprint is gonna look like? Is it, is that weeks, months, years? How long is that?
I would put it in the months category. We, as you know, we came to the commission in January, and Taylor presented to you all the output from our community sessions about the priorities and the programs for that park in addition to Crossings and Mid Island. We talked with Town Council at their annual workshop, and then they had another workshop last week. And I, I'll get into more detail at your next meeting about what's coming out of there. But right now, staff is working on revising the RFQ that we had out. We pulled it back to take another look at that. So it'll probably be late spring before we have a consultant onboard. And we'll do some high level look at all three of the parks and then decide. It's, it's most likely that Mid Island will move quicker than the others, just based on council priorities. But we'll give a look at all those to kinda know what's coming where, and then we'll be better able, Mr. Okarma, to schedule out and let you all know when the different parks should come online in terms of more detailed design and construction.
Okay, great, thank you. I have no other questions. I'm, I'm happy with what's in front of me.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, I have a comment and then a proposal, I guess. I watched the Town Council workshop on the master plan and planning, and there were three options presented to them. The first one was, unless I misread it, to simply do the Mid Island Track in, in kind of a passive park form. And then with, I didn't really see in the first, you know, option much thought about Chaplain or Crossings. So I'm glad to see that they're all three here under master, major park master planning, because that's what we've been talking about all along. And especially if we're gonna have the Mid Island Track be somewhat passive and be somewhat less developed, less active recreation, that's gonna put a lot of pressure on those other two parks to perform and pick up the slack. So hopefully, we at least master plan all three. And I, I believe that's our intention, is to master plan all three, and then they will come in whatever sequence makes the best sense. So that's just a comment. Under existing park recreation facilities, you know, I have two kids, 11 and eight, and we play a lot of sports. And there's one thing we don't have on the island. It's a pretty inexpensive ask. We do not have a recreational football field on the island. We, we don't, not with goalposts. I mean, there's some fields you could play football on, if your imagination's good. But we have mini basketball courts. We have soccer fields with goals. But we do not have a set of goalposts anywhere on the island or a scoreboard to go with that. And, you know, we just spent good money on the rectangular sports field at Crossings. You know, we put the bathrooms in there. They look great. You know, I've been down there, and that field is lighted. It's the perfect size. I would like to suggest, I don't know how we word this, but we allot just a small, small amount of money. You know, the bathrooms were allotted $150,000. I think for maybe to get a small scoreboard to, and I would go football only goalpost, because if you put soccer goals out there, it will get used in an unscheduled fashion, and as Julian can tell you, it, it'll get roughed up quickly. So maybe a set of a football goalpost, a small scoreboard that could just maintain a score, and maybe even like a cheap utility or a storage barn like you would see parked out in front of Home Depot would be 30,000 tops. I mean, probably not even that much. And so if you spend $150,000 on bathrooms, and it's already lit, you know, so when redesign crossings, I think the last thing you would do would be to tear down lights on a field where you just spent bathrooms. If you had to, you had to. But I think that would be the last thing you would X out of your plan is a, a working field, you know, that's already in shape. So Butch, I don't know how we do this, but how would we make a suggestion that we allot a little money to creating something that we don't have? And that's for a short amount of money, we're adding a whole new sport. You know, we have hockey. We have everything else under the sun, but we don't have recreational football.
Why don't we go, oh gosh, what would be the best way to do this? I'll tell you what, let's, are you gonna, are you gonna make that in the form of a motion?
I think we should. Should we wait till the end of everyone's comments or?
Yeah, why don't we do that and then we'll come back to that?
Yeah.
Okay?
All right.
All right.
All right, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Monmier?
I hate to be contradictory to Mr. Daly's comments, but as the athletic director at Hilton Island High School, it doesn't matter whether you put a goalpost, no-go post, or anything, if it's an open field, students and people on our island will try to use it, even with a locked gate. So the only real, I feel, that we need to look at is if we're gonna redo surfaces, that we should look into an artificial surface, because the problem with it is, is that no matter what we do, even here, the, the elementary school put a little tiny pad over there, artificial turf, and there's kids, high school kids, middle school kids over there every day. And I'm constantly chasing them off our campus during the summer. So that's a great idea, but I don't think that's gonna stop usage when, when no one's there. And that's one of the things, you know, having all these nice things, fields and things like that are just, they're overused because there's just no real way to keep, you know, anyone from using it at any given time. And again, if they use it in a time when it's raining or muddy, it just messes it up. So that's just my comment there. I think you guys are doing a great job. I do feel like today, this meeting, I felt really positive about last meeting, this meeting. I don't, I don't know if we were kinda stepping back again and talking about, you know, it's already '22. I, I feel like we, I wanna start rolling some stuff out in, in, in '21, but that's just my own. I, I don't quite understand how all this process works, because I'm a newbie to this committee. But I wanna start seeing shovels hit the ground, I guess, for, for lack of terms. Sorry, Mr. Daly, I didn't mean to kinda stop your point there, but.
There was a time, Joe, several years ago, when we really weren't attuned to the CIP process at all, right before Butch got involved, to tell you the truth. And what would happen would be, I know Jack, you probably remember this for sure, that, you know, all these projects were happening and they were getting put in line, and we're, we're like watching the parade go by. So finally, Butch grabbed it by the horns and said, wait a minute here. Where's, where does this whole parade start? And it starts with the CIP process. So just looking back historically, I, I feel like we're in such a better, better position now to get some input in. I don't know if you feel the same, Jack.
No, I, I agree. I agree absolutely. It's a lot more orderly, you know, we're getting good input. And I agree with Joe, there's nothing you can really do to keep someone off a field. I'm just saying that for a low amount of money, we can offer something, you know, a whole new sport that we don't have, we don't have a facility for. That's all I'm saying. And yeah, it would be tough to keep people off, maybe, you know, with the lights, it wouldn't be on at night or something. But it's kind of a low ask to add a, a whole sport, you know. But I agree with you, Jerry. Absolutely right.
Okay, let's, let's keep going.
Mr. Zarilla?
Uh, yeah, I could, I could kinda chime in on that a little bit. I think, I think it's a good idea to add another sport. I'd be just a little curious as to what the demand is for that. And, you know, and what the facility would look like, whether it be bleachers, that sort of thing. I mean, would we have visiting teams come in? Would it be a practice field or something like that? And I would be, you know, I'd be all for another sport, provided it doesn't delay other things that are kind of in the process or, and, and you talk about the field, if it had some negative ramifications with the overall planning process that we started, that what we were gonna have over at Chaplain Park or something like that, that we'd have to undo it. I'm not sure if now's the time, and I, and I went through the planning, I mean, I was kind of curious, actually. I really didn't see in the plan any demand for football fields like there are for pickleball courts and things like that. So, you know, my biggest concern would be that we don't delay other things. And I, you know, kind of, I wanna also chime in on Joe or comment about, I thought things would move a little faster. I'd get concerned that we're gonna study, 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 and it's 2023. So I, you know, if it didn't get in the way of anything, I'd be all for that.
Mr. Dowling?
My main question was really asked by Jerry. I would, I would just like to have and understand timelines a little better. I'm still, I don't know if it's just me, but I'm still a little confused on all that, on timelines. And I think that's starting to be a, a normal scenario amongst everybody here. So somehow, and I know it's hard when you're planning, but if we could just have a better idea of, of timing so that we get some sense of it, that would be helpful for me. And talking about the fields, I look at our cost benefit analysis. If the amount is $30,000 and you have the ability to get another sport there, it sounds like it makes sense to me without knowing all the other details. But to add another sport with a, a low cost, it makes sense to me.
Ms. Christian?
Um, my questions are actually regarding the new parks. And from what I'm hearing, the, the Town Council had acquired the property, and so these family property parks are really gonna be neighborhood parks that are still open to the public, correct? Open to those neighborhood?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, so Taylor Park, if it's kind of on the piece of property that's across from Chinaberry, what's, what was the acreage? Maybe I missed that. I mean, is it like a couple of acres? I mean, there's a lot of communities on that end, you know, of the island with Chinaberry. You got Marsh Point, Marshside. You've got the, the Development, you know, off Katie, Katie O'Donnell, or whatever that road is. And you've got all those, yep, and Katie Miller. And then you've got all the Homestead, Wild Horse Road. So is it a large piece of property? Because I would think that there's a lot of families that live in close proximity, not to mention Carolina Isles and all the homes down Squire Pope.
I don't have the acreage for that one with me today, because we're not getting into what should happen on it yet. That would be the planning part of it. And if your thought is that, yes, we should move forward with it, but make sure it's, has enough stuff for. we should move forward with it, but make sure it has enough stuff or is big enough for a large number of residents in that area, then that's good input. And we'll be back to y'all to talk specifically about any of these projects that would go into the design phase for more, more details at that time.
Okay. Well, when I saw the family property, I thought, are these closed to just the residents close by? And, okay, that's all, yep.
No, that's just a working name, because that's what it was. It was Taylor Family Property. And it might end up with a different name, or that might be the name of the park. But that's just how we're referring to it for now.
Okay. And as for the, the other comments about the football, I, I think it's a great idea, but I don't think it should take preference over or prioritized over, you know, some of the other big projects that, you know, the commission and the town's been kind of working towards. I think the Chaplain Mid Island Park or the Mid Island Track Park and Crossings are the ones that we should definitely be focused on anyways for right now. I'm excited about all the new stuff that's going on and the other things, the, the new restrooms, the pour play surface for Jarvis Creek. I think those are all fabulous additions. So hats off to the, to the town staff that did all that. So thank you, guys.
And Mr. Casia?
Okay. And I'll ask Julian or Jennifer to correct me as I go through a few comments. I think the first thing is that everybody needs to understand that the, the CIP projects are for those projects that are, I don't want to say small projects, but they're, they're things inside parks or otherwise. The, we're going to be planning three big parks. One in particular, the Mid Island Park is going to be a huge park. When we, when we get into that process, we're going to be involved heavily in that. And I think there's been some, some delay in getting, you know, the request for proposals out based on conversations that the council has, has had. And we, we all know that, you know, town councils, where the rubber meets the road, okay? So they make those decisions. And, and that's, so we live by that. Having said that, I think we, we get this planning process underway. We've been so busy getting the, you know, the 50,000 foot view of what we want to do with, through the master plan and all the things that Jennifer and Taylor have done to get us to where we are. Now we, we have kind of boots on the ground, so to speak, to decide what we're going to do with three particular pieces of property. So when we get into that, then we start looking at specific uses. And it all ties back into the land itself, and what, what's the best use for that, for that piece of property. And along with that, at some point will be a, an idea of how that development would be funded. A year or so ago, there was some discussion about a quality of life referendum. I think that's still out there. And if so, that would be a major funding source to develop really and truly these three parks. So it's, it's not that we're, we're not getting anything done. This is a new day for, for Hilton Head in, in the, I guess, the, the interest and the impetus on to getting parks developed and getting new parks. It's this, you know, I don't, I'm not sure the town has really gotten into this in a long, in a long, long time. We've built individual parks and done, and I think done a great job. But we're at the point now where we're having to come back and look at some of our existing parks that have kind of been loved to death, and we need to fix them up. So it's kind of a new day. So we're, we're going to be working through all of that. But the CIP is a great place for us. If we see things in existing parks, or if we have some new property, like the new parks we're talking about, that the town has acquired the property and the need is there because folks live in that area, and it's been identified, you know, in the master plan, then we should be looking at, at doing something with those facilities. And the CIP is a good place to find some money to get that process started. Having said that, we, we're talking, Jack has asked about the football. And, you know, to me, a set of goalposts is not a big deal. You know, you put them, you can put them in sleeves. And when, if we decide we're going to do something else with that field, we just pull them up out of the ground. And we can use them again somewhere else. And if I got my notes right here, it looks like we had some money set aside for fencing at crossings at the skating rink. I don't know if that money could be moved to do these things. But if so, there's $100,000 there to, that we could use for something else. I don't know if we can do that or not, but I'll throw that out there. So I think that we need to, to have, how do I say, small ideas, knowing that there are big ideas coming. For example, depending on what we come up with with these park development plans that we have, I think Joe's suggestion about synthetic turf, it's absolutely the way to go. And when we look at, we're going to build soccer fields, or we're going to build, you know, new baseball complexes, or we're going to build, you know, football field, we need to really be thinking that that's the way we're going to build these things, so we can cut down on our maintenance costs, and at the same time, get more use out of them. So anyway, I don't really have any other comments about the actual list itself. And so, does anyone else have any? Yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, Jennifer?
I'd just like to chime in before you're ready for a motion.
Okay.
Just a couple of things. You're right about goalposts and sleeves. When you start talking about scoreboards that require electrical
Right.
and someone to have the equipment to run them, and start talking about storage buildings, because we wouldn't buy like a off the shelf storage unit, no offense, but that's not, you know, the, the level of quality that we're talking about. So I just think about that. Also, think about the fact that you did just recommend adoption of a Parks and Rec master plan, and then supported the priorities and programming for, from part three. And looking at the list, no one said football was a short term priority. So just for consideration, think about the scale. Also want to acknowledge, I, I get the frustration that it seems like we're, we go too slow. None of it is going to move fast. It just doesn't. And I'll give you as good a timelines as I can, as soon as I possibly can. It's just as frustrating for staff to not know when things are going to happen and want to schedule that out. So I assure you that as soon as I have something a little bit definitive, I will bring it to you. And your chairman is absolutely right. I mean, this is a huge day for Parks and Recreation on the island. At the, at council's workshop in late January, I don't know how many of you watched it, but they went through and prioritized all the strategies from our plan. And there were very few that got unanimous across seven council members as a priority in the now term. And by now, that doesn't mean we're ready for a shovel in the ground, but that means moving forward with, with something. And Parks and Recreation was one of the few things. So the work that y'all have done, and the people on the commission before you, and the clubs and groups that you're part of have laid this groundwork, and council has bought into it. So rest assured that they, they've heard you, they're listening, we're going to be moving significant amounts of recreation. I even, I don't know if you, at, at the workshop, somebody said, yeah, we need a big wow in recreation. And I didn't say it, but I'm thinking, we just opened Low Country Celebration Park two months ago. Like, wow, it's huge, and it's amazing. And if you haven't been down there, shame on you, because it's just so much fun. I know Jack called a couple days before it opened to say, can, can the kids go today, you know, as soon as it opens and play, you know, they're, they're just dying to get out there. Absolutely do it. Have fun. So there's stuff coming, and we're going to do a good job, and we're going to do it at high quality. So just keep that in mind. If you want to make a recommendation, I suggest you, someone make a motion, and we will add that on here to the park upgrades list. And it will be then to park, Planning Commission, CIP Committee, full Planning Commission, Town Council to take that off. But it's certainly okay to make recommendations. That's why we worked through the list with you all a couple years ago, and while we're here today to get your input.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, so we, we have a recommendation. So the chair would entertain a motion concerning what we want to do to enhance football here on the island. So Jack, you got a, got a recommendation for us?
Okay, yeah, I'll, yeah, and I'm glad you two explained that, that this is coming out of the CIP budget, which is different, and will in no way affect the large items. This is a small budget, but a pretty big bang kind of approach to take an existing facility and make it usable. So I would like to make a motion that we, let's see, set aside up to $25,000?
Just tell it, yeah, just tell us what you want.
Don't worry about the dollars.
All right. You'd have to have goalposts, or you don't have a game. And then explore like a cheap scoreboard, something that's slightly better than like the shot clock thing you hold at the basketball that's portable, you can take to the outside basketball playground, something that would have a clock and could keep score, that could even be stored in a different facility, and you could pull it out for those events and have it. So that would make you have a game. You have goalposts, you have even a, a cheap scoreboard with a clock on it, and you're in business. And so, and that would allow that field that's already there, and the perfect dimensions with bathrooms and lights, you'd add a whole new sport. So how do I make that, Butch?
So just to clarify, is your motion to add to the existing park upgrade list, the addition of goalposts and scoreboard to the meadow at Crossings Park?
Yeah, to the rectangular field across from the meadows at Crossings Park.
Okay.
Because meadow is that undefined shape.
The one where the lights?
With the lights.
Yes, Julian.
I don't want to be out of line here, but that, that's a soccer field where the lights are at. That, that is used. And we, we need to realize and understand that through a memorandum of understanding, the Island Rec has jurisdiction over scheduling sports on these fields. Unfortunately, just not anyone can go out and organize team sports without getting the Island Rec involved. I'm not sure what Mr. Daly's timeline is for this football, but I wanted to let the commission know that that is a soccer field. And it always has been a soccer field, and, and it is scheduled for soccer. So I just don't know what that timeline. I initially thought Jack was talking about the meadow, and I was going to say, well, I don't remember lights being out there at the meadow. But I just want to let the commission know, and I'm sure Jack already knows this, that that field is, is a soccer field, and it's fully utilized by the Island Rec for soccer. And you may or may not know that when the town took that over, we spent a lot of money to get that field updated. And it's going to start getting used, I believe, March 15. I have to look at the rec schedule. But any and everything has to be vetted through the Island Rec Center, because through a memorandum of understanding that they have with the town, they're the jurisdictional entity that, that sort of helps everyone, would help Jack, you know, play some, some football on a field that could be used for that. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay.
You do see a lot of goalposts that incorporate, it's basically an H shape that incorporates a soccer goal, the frame for it. You know, so that wouldn't exclude anything. And as we are now, we don't have a recreational football field. And I, I don't know that we can just go ask Joe to go use the school field for recreational football. There's probably a lot of entanglements there, you know, especially these days.
Isn't Barker Field? Isn't Barker Field extension?
That's what the rec's been using now. They've been using Barker baseball field, fields for their little Gator football program. So the rec center has.
But there's no goalposts there. So you're not really, you have a field, but you don't have a football field. So I, I don't know that we own Barker Field yet to, you know, plan on putting goalposts there. I don't know if we've passed that, you know, deal yet. So that's why I was looking at the crossings field, just happens to be that size. And, you know, I don't see, you know, we could add a sport for cheap.
Is there maybe a better motion, considering the fact?
Yep.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Go ahead, Jerry.
I was just going to say, is this something that we need to get the Island, Island Rec's input on? I mean, because it sounds like we might be, you know, impinging on what they, you know, what they otherwise, you know, would be scheduling.
Is Frank here in the meeting?
No, I actually.
I don't think so.
What I was going to say is you could make a motion to consider the addition of football goalposts where appropriate. And that would allow you to be on the record of saying that you're interested in football. And it would allow staff and Island Rec to work to make sure it's at the appropriate location on the island. And that could end up being at one of the new parks. It might not be a now thing, but it needs to be done in a appropriate way. And so a motion to that effect, without pinning it down, would allow us to, to have those conversations.
I mean, so much of what we've learned over the years is that the timing is important on, not only what we say, but when we say it. And I, I don't know, I just, maybe I missed it, but I, I kind of view this as something that, and we've never talked about. I don't think we've talked about it. And so I, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I guess if there's a motion that says that, you know, that it's something that in coordination with the Island Rec Center, whatever, we would explore this, then I'd be okay with that. But to me, Jack, to tell you the truth, I mean, this is, I know it's two goalposts, but I think it's more than that, because I think when Island Rec sees two football goalposts up there, you know, first of all, we'll surprise them. And second of all, they're going to say, hey, wait a minute, you know, I'm scheduling that field. Why are we encouraging people to do stuff that I can't, I can't control?
Okay.
Yeah. And I think to, not necessarily to Jack's defense, but I think the, the purpose was the fact that this is the CIP discussion. And that would be the, I think, the proper time to bring up if there was an expense that, that we were looking to do. So, but I think, I didn't realize they were using Barker. I thought, frankly, Joe, I thought Island Rec used the football field at the high school.
They do for their games, but they practice at Barker.
Okay.
Island Rec Center in Beaufort County has a, has a use agreement. So
Okay.
that's why we allow them to use the stadium.
So, Jack, I can't, I think you kind of see where folks are. Is there any other discussion about it? Or I guess we should, we need a motion before we discuss it. So go ahead, Jack. Tell me what you want to do.
Just your point, Joe. Island Rec didn't do tackle football last year. So the people who wanted to play football had to create their own team and join a league. And I mean, if, if the school's available to us, that would be easy. I don't know that it is or is not, you know, I don't know if they're contractually obliged to work with Island Rec or with, I don't know. That's a whole nother subject. So that's why I was just thinking for, on the cheap, we could modify an existing field to have rec football. So I guess I'll make that motion, that I make a motion that we explore in the CIP budget, and not in the major park master planning, in the CIP budget, we explore using an existing field and adding goalposts and a scoreboard to facilitate rec football this year.
All right. We have a, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I would second that one. Jerry?
All right. Jerry seconds. All right. Any further discussion?
I just want to, I just want to clarify that when we're exploring, I guess, you know, my issue is, I'd be all for a small investment in an empty field that's not really being used for anything. But I think it'd be inappropriate to convert a soccer field that's But I think it'd be inappropriate to convert a soccer field that's being used. They may consider it into a football field where it would impinge the use of the soccer. So, you know, it'd be that, that kind of thing. I think it'd make a few people happy and maybe a lot more unhappy if you did something like that. So if that's what we mean by explore, to see if it's really feasible to do this, yeah, I'd be happy with that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Before we vote, yes, ma'am?
I think we need to make sure that we say that we're exploring the possibility wherever appropriate, and not make it just an existing field. I think as Mr. O'Karma said, we need to make sure that if it's an open area that's not being utilized, and we can put it there, then maybe that's the best option, because I know how busy that that rec center is with soccer, and they are not going to want to give up practice time, game times for football, at least in the same season. So maybe just make the motion to say where appropriate, as Jennifer Ray had suggested earlier.
Okay.
I would even second that one.
All right. Jack, will you accept that as your, as an amendment to your motion?
That we're going to say where appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so the language had, we're looking in the CIP budget for this year to find room where appropriate to add a goalpost and a soccer board, or a scoreboard, excuse me, to facilitate youth football.
Does that sound okay, Jerry? Are you all right with that, with your second?
Yes.
So this is a, this is a outside group. So this would be an outside group outside the rec center using this football facility?
Yeah, an outside nonprofit that played this last year.
Okay. So what happens when the Island Rec Center, after COVID goes away, they have football, too?
I don't know. You may have more than one team.
Then I think it's, it's not appropriate at that point. I think that the Island Rec, if they're controlling some of these parks, then they're the controller on the scheduling at the park.
Well, what if the Island Rec isn't offering football? Then what, I mean, the customers, the people, not, you know, an institution.
I think that maybe a way to think about this is, and I think we all understand, we don't have enough fields to do everything we want to do anyway. And so I think if we look where appropriate to try to put together a, you know, a place where kids can play football, then I think that's what, that's what I think we're trying to do. And we can get into who's going to schedule it, all that kind of stuff. It could be that, I'm just thinking, it could, I don't, I don't know, if we put it at Barker, since we don't actually own that property, but if they're already using Barker, then that might be the place that it goes. But I think it's worth looking into. And I think that's what we're saying in the motion. Let's look into doing this where appropriate. And I think in doing that, we need to talk with Island Rec and find out what their plans are for football. And then, because we do have an agreement, the town does have an agreement with Island Rec to provide programming on the facilities. I think Julian's right about that. So having said that, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion? Marcy, if you'll read the list, we'll vote again.
Mr. O'Karma?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Monmoner?
No.
Mr. Zerilla?
Yes.
Mr. Dowling?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Kasaya?
Yes. I understand what you're saying, Joe. Right now, the Island Rec has, I'm trying to make sure, Island Rec has an agreement with the school system. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll see if there's a good place to put some goalposts and maybe a scoreboard. I do think, though, that Jennifer makes a good point. It doesn't need to be a permanent scoreboard, because, depending on where it is, it doesn't need to be a permanent scoreboard, because all of that may be changing here in the next couple of years. And, you know, a big, I would rather do it right, and make a nice field, and put a nice scoreboard up, than to have something like you would see, as Jack said, at a basketball game that's sitting on a table. So we're going to do it right. Let's do it right. Yes, sir.
One comment. What you see now everywhere, and what we do need in the end on these master plans, is the most common footprint you see for active recreation is a double set of turf fields that are rectangular for lacrosse, soccer, football, any field sport. And in the middle, you have bleachers and concessions. And when you have those two turf fields side by side with the facility in the middle, those things are red hot, rent for thousands of dollars, you know, per day. People would come. Now, we have people locally going out to Elabel, Richmond Hill, and other places that are far ahead of us, just to rent those facilities. And so that's what you're going to have, is these multi-use things, turf fields that would play for any number of sports, and just get scheduled according to season. So, I mean, I think that's where we're going in the end, but that end could be four or five years down the road. So where we are now is, yeah, there isn't a set of goalposts that aren't involved in heavy contractual arrangements, which is part of why we're having a master plan. So, you know, that's all it is, is trying to, on the cheap, add some play. And we know where we need to go in the end, but the end's a long way away. And in the end, you will have those fields that you just want to call a multi-use, because it takes care of five sports. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. So Jennifer, do we need a motion to say that we're okay with the parks section of the CIP, and ask that it be sent forward to, I guess, back to the planning commission? Do we need to do anything like that?
You don't have to, but you're welcome to. That would make it official.
Okay. I think that would be the right thing to do, if for no other reason, as Jerry pointed out earlier, we need to, we should, we should have a voice in Parks and Rec Matters wherever they are. And we haven't had that in a long time. So anytime I think we can do that, it helps, it helps the commission. So the chair would entertain a motion that we recommend adoption of the CIP as presented by Jennifer under the parks category. Is that about right? Does that work?
That's okay.
Okay. So anybody, would anybody like to make that motion? I can't make it.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. William Bill seconds. All right. A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Okay. So this is, this is the reason I was silent there for a minute. And isn't it that we're approving the CIP draft that's been presented to us, subject to what we just did two minutes ago?
Yes.
So it's not, it's not like we're approving this lock, stock, and barrel, because we're lock, we're approving it lock, stock, and barrel, subject to the additional recommendation that we made in the last motion that we just did.
Correct. That would be right. I may not have stated that correctly, but that, that's exactly what we're doing.
Okay, good. I'm all, I'm all for it. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you, Jerry. I appreciate you straightening me out here. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. Then, Marcy, let's go down the list, and we'll vote again.
Mr. O'Karma?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Monmoner?
Yes.
Mr. Zerilla?
Yes.
Mr. Dowling?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Kasaya?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Julian, for your help with all of this. Don't run off. We're going to go on down, park updates. I don't think we have any. Or, Julian, do we have any park updates? You pretty much gave us those.
Yeah, not, not really. I'd like to just let the commission know that at the request of HHBA, we're replacing the batting cage lights with LED lights. And you may or may not remember that recently, I've upfitted the old batting cages, they're double-barrel netted pole cages, and we're going to add some lights to those, too, to help with, with some of the batting practices.
All right. That's great. Okay. Any comments from the commissioners? If you have any other comments from anyone?
Me.
Okay. I'm not seeing anybody, not hearing anybody. I just want to say one thing. We lost a good friend to Parks and Recreation in this town in the death of Scott. And I want, I want to, if it's appropriate, to just take a moment of silence in remembrance of him, and in a way, thanking him for, for everything he did for us and for the town for Parks and Rec. Yes, Jack?
On that note, before we take our moment of silence, this Friday is opening day for baseball, and we are putting up a banner in honor of Scott Liggett on one of our fences. He was a board member, was always good with baseball. And just on that same note, we're going to recognize him, and I think some town staff and possibly his wife would be there privately.
That's great. Thank you. So unless anyone has a, an issue, if you don't mind, we're just going to take a minute as a moment of silence for Scott, and we will, then we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you very much. And with that, this meeting of the Town of Hilton Head Parks and Recreation Commission is adjourned. If I had a gavel, I'd hit it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. We're still moving in the right direction, guys. Thank you.